Obviously, we have a triple header of events beginning between now for about the next hour. A discussion of items that we have, in the course of our budget hearings, wanted to consider for additional funding or changes in the budget, followed by a joint meeting of planning and budget at 5:15 to consider the capital improvement budget amendments, and then obviously followed by a 6 o'clock council meeting to consider the CIB as well as a few other pieces of legislation. Our general sort of format for this is simply to go through the list of items on our additional funding request list, our quote "wish" list, and indeed if there are folks that have opinions or comments to make or wish to ask a question, that is the appropriate time to do it. This is obviously not a deliberation meeting at this point in time. This is a point in time to express an opinion or to ask a question. So with that, we will simply, assuming everyone has a copy of that list on their desk, if you don't, raise your hand and Ms. Waller will get one to you. We will sort of go down each one where we have a sponsor here calling them. Clearly, in some instances, some things require more discussion than others, and we will try our best to be as expeditious as we can, keeping in mind that we need to cover a lot of territory. We begin with two items, increasing the arts grants fund under the Arts Commission and the additional increase for the arts grants fund, with three different council members speaking up for those with different amounts. And Councilwoman Berry, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Yes, as we discussed during the budget hearings for the Arts Commission, I think that we have not seen an increase in any kind of arts grants funding for several years. So I would like to propose that we increase the arts grants. I had asked for $60,000. I know that there's an additional ask from another council member that I would also support for $70,000, so I just want to put that down as a way to ensure that arts continues to be an important part of our community, and I think it's in line with the grants funding that we need to do, and I would appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Weiner.
I did not push my button.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, nevermind. Something hit it. Councilman Claiborne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we were going through the budget hearing and the Arts Commission was here, I have to admit that when I made my request, that I sincerely believe that the council lady had requested a $6,000 increase. I did not hear 60, so maybe that's my aging ears. I didn't have my hearing aids with me. I don't know.
She increased it. She increased it.
Huh?
She increased her suggestion.
You did say six. Okay. Good. I'm not out of my mind, then. But in view of the fact that it's at 60 now, then I would withdraw my request, considering all the other things that we have to look at here. I was just simply going to say that if we can do six, we certainly ought to be able to do 10.
Okay.
But so I would withdraw.
So you support at least 10 of that 60 requests?
I do.
Okay. Any further discussion on that part of the request? The third item under the Arts Commission is the Neighborhood Art Program, for which there was a memo placed on everyone's desk. This is, because my name is by it, I will give you a brief explanation. This is the Arts Commission's suggestion to create a small micro-funding program to allow neighborhood organizations, small neighborhood organizations, to get grants of up to $2,000, which would be paid to the artists to do small projects in neighborhoods throughout the city. Organizations that participate in this do not have to be 501(c)(3)'s. They've worked with the procurement office and finance, and that's why funding would go directly to artists in conjunction with the neighborhood groups. But this would allow us to expand participation in the arts program to groups beyond those that get regular grants. Councilman Tigert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you bringing this forward. To me, there are two key elements to this and why I support this 100 percent. The first is this is neighborhood-oriented. It is not necessarily downtown or any specific, but it is an opportunity for those communities that have been desiring or wanting or have projects that just simply lack funding to apply for. And secondly, by taking out some of the restrictions of the nonprofit status and whatnot, we still have the safeguards that the Arts Commission, Arts Department will oversee the process and make sure the artist does and the community gets what it thinks it's getting out of this deal. So I think this is a very wise use of funding and something that will certainly benefit most neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although all neighborhoods are a value to us, some neighborhoods are not as organized as others. And so my concern, you know, if you will address it, Councilman Stein, is how do we make sure that we have equity that maybe, and I haven't read all the way through this, but is there any mechanism in place to state that it will be equally divided among all the districts?
There's nothing that provides in a district, but there's no limit. It doesn't have to be a neighborhood organization. It can be any kind of organization that applies. The fund, and the reason is because the funding from the Arts Commission actually goes to the artist.
I understand that.
So the artist in the group goes, so there is no limit on who can participate in this. The only limit is that they can't already be getting a grant from the Metro Arts Commission.
Right.
So this, and the funding in this proposal would allow for a minimum of 20 projects of up to $2,000, but they believe most projects will be smaller than that, so somewhere between 20 and 35 projects could be funded in a given year.
Okay, so again, my only, I suspect Councilman Tigert said, and Councilman Stein, I support it as well. What I want to do is make sure that there's a mechanism in place that certain neighborhoods and certain neighborhood organizations are more organized than others, that we're not highly concentrated, that we have the same issue that Tigert just explained, but all the funding being put downtown. Then we have a situation where all the funding is put in certain areas of town where they're more high, where they're more organized and the art appreciation is greater because of that organization.
And one other caveat, if you get one of these grants within a given year, you can't apply again for another full year. So the same people can't continue to do it time after time, which ensures, but I will absolutely send those concerns, Jen Cole, and see if we can't figure out a mechanism to make sure it's spread around.
And my last point, again, in the neighborhood I live in, we just organize, imagine this historic neighborhood I live in, they just organized their neighborhood this past year, and we are the only neighborhood organization in the entire area by which we live, even though we are in a very historic place. So that's why I'm saying some areas that need the art just are not as organized as others.
Right. And let me also tell you, I know in some communities, sororities and fraternities, they too could apply. I mean, it could be any kind of organization that wants to work within the community and lining those things up, but we will get that addressed. Other comments on the Neighborhood Art Program? See none, then we'll move under the Planning Commission. The first item is the council-initiated zoning application expense that the Planning Department has estimated if, at a maximum of $149,600, this would fund essentially the legislation sponsored by Councilwoman Blaylock. And the floor is open for any comments, or is that Councilman Bedney?
Thank you, Chair. And this is extremely important legislation for us. It helps us achieve one of the most important things we do in the council, and it will give us the opportunity to be able to do the job for the city. So I wholeheartedly ask the rest of the members that they support this request.
Thank you. Councilwoman Weiner.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Mr. Bedney, and I also want to just state that I see this as another neighborhood-friendly amendment.
Councilman Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those members of the council that will be here the next time around, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman and others that have been here, this is, councils in the past have had this money before with planning. Planning has done this before. For whatever reason, these funds came out of planning in other administrations, and I'm glad you're putting it back. But if you're here the next time around, make sure that it stays.
Any further comments on this item? Then as we move to the suggestion for a planner 2 position in the Planning Department, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I'll also just second what everyone said about the zoning application. I think this actually goes hand-in-hand with it too, though. The planning position that we have here is for that community liaison position, and, you know, obviously, they need an extra planner anyway. I think that could be part of their job, but also to be working with us more hand-in-hand in the community, as if we are going to have a little bit more, you know, zoning application expenses going on. The planners down in the community, I think, will help us make the right decisions on what we're doing. So I hope you can support this and we can have this position on for the Planning Department.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this particular item? Excuse me. Then we move to the two items under the Historical Commission. The first is the city cemetery maintenance proposal, which is essentially a pass-through the Historical Commission that would administer the funds for the city cemetery maintenance. I see the two sponsors are actually sitting next to each other at the moment. They're nodding their heads, I assume. Any further explanation? Councilwoman Moore.
I just want to say that the city cemetery, you know, is always in need of maintenance, and this is our own, you know, pride. I mean, this is our own historical city cemetery, and to see that house being maintained on a yearly basis is really great. And I'm hoping that, you know, again, we consider that, again, that we take care of this. And so I've been there, I've seen it, I've been on tours, and I know what maintenance that it continually needs, so I hope that we continue to support this. Thank you, Chair.
And a different-looking Councilman Tin Penny. Councilman Harrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the sentiments of Council Lady Moore. The Historical Commission and the Nashville City Cemetery have worked hand-in-hand for a long time. It's just recently that the cemetery has gone ahead and just kind of taken over the cemetery in so many ways. They're finding graves that have been lost for years due to progress in the area, and not only that, a lot of them have historical significance. Just about everybody over there, some kind of way is connected to somebody who's a pillar of the city. It's a great opportunity to get a big bang for a little bit of money, so I encourage everybody to support this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this one? Thank you. That then moves us to the proposal for a suggestion for a new historic preservationist 1 position. Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I know we had a lot of, you know, back and forth about this, and they had someone last year. Just anything we can work on this, I know in our deliberations, the way I see it, we could either kind of be more efficient and just try to survive this year, which I think is definitely on the table, and that's fine. We just need to figure out, you know, I've got to stand up for my folks in my neighborhoods with the conservation overlays we're doing. So that's an option. Maybe we come up with some kind of compromise where it's halfway, January 1st, we implement the fee for conservation overlays, those kind of things, to try and figure this out or just fund the position. Again, I'm okay with just belt-tightening, make sure the office itself is more efficient as well this year, and one way or the other, just figure out how we can work on this in our neighborhoods.
Councilwoman Weiner.
Thank you, Chair. I would be curious to find out if we can table that this year and move till next year, and during the course of this year, look at how we can generate fees to cover more of that expense. I see the importance, but I just think that we need to be, you know, a little specific about how we offset those expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bedney.
Yeah, if I may use a soccer analogy, I haven't talked about soccer today yet, and I remind you the World Cup start in a couple of days. We shouldn't really play defensive on the issue of preservation. I think what I'm proposing is that we are more proactive and try to go out and try to preserve the history of Nashville. As we grow and are more successful as a city, we risk losing some of what makes us unique, and I think what I'm, I understand what my peers are saying, but if it is at all possible to put that person there to help us improve our preservation efforts, I think it's going to help us keep what makes Nashville so interesting and one, make so many people want to come and live and do business here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the Historical Commission? That moves us to the funding, proposed funding increases to fund additional early voting sites and several other funding requests from the Election Commission. Councilwoman Blaylock.
I'm all for early voting. Do you know how many early voting sites this is exactly?
The original proposal was 14 early voting sites for both August and November. For how many days, gentlemen, the original proposal?
August.
Mr. Wall, how many days was the original proposal?
For November, it was all sites 14 days. August was...
Now, how many sites for those 14 days?
14.
14 sites for 14 days in the original proposal, and then for November, how many days?
No, that was November.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, right.
How many more is that than what we're currently doing?
Mr. Wall.
For the May primary, we had the Sunny West location for 14 days, and there were six other sites that were added by funding from the council. It varies by the election, however. There's no fixed number.
Do we expect more voters when we have more voting sites?
The primary reason that we're looking at August and the early voting, a number of early voting sites, the increase, is because it's going to take a long time for a voter to read the ballot. It's a very long ballot, and the state coordinator has estimated that it will take eight to nine minutes per voter at the voting machine to read the ballot and vote. So we are trying to move the voting populace, if you will, to early voting, so we relieve the pressure on election day.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Weiner.
I'll just state that it's everybody's incumbent right to be able to vote and that it not take an inordinate amount of time, and I strongly suggest that we adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Berry.
Thank you, Chair. Are we on the juvenile court?
Not yet. We were on Election Commission.
Oh, no, we were off. Yes, I, yeah, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Any other comments on the Election Commission additional funding requests? See none, then we will move to juvenile court. Did you want to be, talk on juvenile court? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, no, I would like to be recognized. My apologies. This is the additional grant match funds, and this is actually a match that the state, the state is going to give us $2 to $1 on this, and so the fact that we're going to get $41,000 for some additional help over in juvenile court, and I think this helps with some probation issues, I think is good. We've made a lot of strides in helping the youth in our community, and I think this will just go forward and do that, so I would like to recommend this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the juvenile court request? Okay. See none, that moves us then to the request to add a, to fund a currently frozen position in the District Attorney's Office. Councilwoman Gilmore, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, this was just based off of listening from the debate that was going on when we had our recent elections, and each one of them had made a commitment to diversity and hiring more people and making more outreach in the community. However, we realized that the positions are frozen, so that would be difficult for either one of the persons. We know that District Attorney Glenn Funk won, but whoever would have won, it would have been difficult for them to make good on those promises if the positions are frozen because they wouldn't be able to hire anyone. So that's what this is, just a request to assist with that, and I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Councilman Dominey.
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a quick question. In the event of the DA, if we're adding a staff person there, do we have to do the same thing with the public defender?
Mr. Cooper, the answer is correct. That's correct.
Yes, it depends, but there is state law that provides that any increase for DA is to have a proportional increase to the public defender.
So is this, does this proposal include both of those positions or positions for both of those departments?
No. If funded, it potentially could result in an automatic increase for the public defender as well.
I think it'd be appropriate that we make sure we've got that covered in our budget just to protect ourselves. We don't want to wind up adding position by default.
You don't want to be sued by Don Deener?
I just sue not to be sued at all. I don't like sending checks on one-way trips to folks that aren't going to benefit our city.
Right. The Chair will take that advice. Councilman Claiborne. Thank you. Did either the District Attorney or the public defender specifically request an additional position when they were here? They did not, but they both indicated that they would be delighted to have anything more they can get in terms of personnel. Right. But they didn't specifically request? They did not. Then I would suggest, considering the other things that we have to do here, that we not do this. Okay. Any other comments on the District Attorney Office request? That then moves us to the request from the, sponsored by the Department of Police, again with the extensive memo that we received, to do a 3% employee pay raise. Comments? Councilman Pride more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the pamphlet that everybody received speaks for itself. I know the amount requested is a, may seem an exorbitant amount, but however, we all know what the police have done and what they've gone through these past few years, and I just feel like the request should be seriously looked at, considered, and if not, at least something. If there's anything possible that we can squeeze out of this budget, I'd appreciate, I'm sure the police officers would certainly appreciate it.
Then the second of the three members of our police caucus, Councilman Pardue.
Thank you, sir. My question is, can we do this without giving the fire department anything?
Then, Mr. Cooper.
They're in the same pay plan, so to the extent they're all under the PS, Public Safety classifications, then it would have to apply to all.
Right. So what I would like to say, I would love to make this $18 million and give them both 3%.
But the $9 million includes those plus general employees?
Yes, the $9 million would include the 3% for metro employees in general.
Entirely.
Okay, that's just not what it says here. I'm tickled. Don't say nothing else. I don't want to make nobody mad.
No, we labeled it because the request came from the FOP, and the 3% employee raise is, would include all metro employees.
Thank you all very much.
Councilwoman Langston.
Thank you. The third member of the police delegation. I like the way it is now. This does include the increments being restored, Mr. Chair.
That's, those increments are already in the mayor's budget. This is an addition to that.
Okay. Just so the increments are still there. I like what's going on. I don't want to change a word of it, and thank you, thank you.
Councilman Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take this time to make my commentary, as I said, to the fire, the union that represents the firefighters as well as FOP, that I support them, and with them asking for additional raise, I also ask that they will consider that any future hired firefighters and/or police officers reside in the county, so that we all pay property taxes and sales taxes and have skin in the game. And so I hope that the FOP will change their position, as well as the firefighters and living in the county and being a resident. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dowell.
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support for the increase as well, and I do concur with Councilman Maynard's comments, that I do would like to, I would like to encourage more police officers and fire safety officers to reside within Davidson County, but I think our constituents has made safety and education one of the bigger issues, and that we should compensate them fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bedney.
I also want to stand in support of this. I know that we are supposed to come up with a way to make it happen, and I will be very interested in to see here recommendations on how to make it happen, but if we can make it happen, I think this is a great investment for the city, and I'm all in support of it. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Stein. Mr. Rebling, I just also want to express that I am in total support of police officers receiving this additional 3%. Actually, they deserve more, but we're going to continue to keep trying to add to their package to make sure that they're properly compensated, so I just wanted to offer my support as well. Thank you.
Councilman Claiborne.
Thank you. So the $9 million includes everybody, police, all general employees, fire, that's the total number, right?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Rebling, if we were to include this along with all the other things, which are probably going to come up, at least it's going to go over $10 million, does that come from the reserves? Is there money other places other than reserve for that to come from?
No money in reserves.
No, not for 10, you couldn't take $10 million more out of reserves, but I mean, you could, I mean, obviously, you'd have to identify some other places in the budget that you want reductions.
All right. So how much could we draw out of reserves and maintain the level that we are obligated to have?
Well, we're not under any legal obligation in terms of...
I understand that.
...what we're supposed to have, but we have a policy in the government, and the council has supported the policy of a minimum of 5% in the operating funds. Our estimate is that with, if this budget would be approved, sort of in its present form, give or take a little bit, but in its present form, we'd have slightly under 6% in the operating funds. So, you know, that's probably a million or $2 million, somewhere in that range.
That could be taken out. 1%.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend it, but that's a council decision.
Right. But I'm just trying to look from a practical point of view here. So you're saying that if we were to do this, then something else that's already being considered in the budget that's been presented, something would have to be cut.
That's the case for everything on this list.
Right.
I mean, that would be my strong recommendation, is that you would start identifying areas, significant areas in the government that you want to do cuts in.
You know, I'm, I'm very, I'm supportive of all the employees, not just the police, not just the firemen, but of all the employees, and I agree that when you look at the last, since 2007, when I've been here, we have, we have not done the employees any favors, only in the past couple of years. But when I sat here during the budget process and listened to the departments come and talk about how they are already struggling with the personnel that they have to provide the services that they need, and we're asking them this year to take cuts, and in most instances, they are, with exception of police and schools and fire and public works, I just, I don't know that I can support this. I mean, it's, it's needed, but it's not realistic, is the way that I see it. That's just one man's opinion here.
Thank you. Councilman Scott Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My two eyes to support our metro police officers and all our metro first responders. I just want an idea, I want us to really look at this year. I know we do everything we can, all of us in this chamber, to help our brothers and sisters that are our first responders out there, but there's some creative, I wouldn't say thinking, but there's some other ways that other large cities like ourselves are helping supplement those funds to their emergency personnel, and I have reached out to individual members, and I just want to encourage us to keep looking at those ideas so that we can still support our first responders, but at the same time, you know, be very prudent to the taxpayers of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dominey.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just ask a couple of questions, it was mentioned the possibility of providing and funding, additional funding for those firefighters and police officers that live in the county. Is that legal?
No, sir.
Would it be possible to have a one-time... Would it be possible to have a one-time bonus for an employee that lived in the county, even if it wasn't a regular pay salary?
That's something we would have to research. I can't, can't give you an answer off the top of my head. We'd have to look at that.
Okay. Well, some of my friends that live outside the county would be upset with me for even asking, but I think it's something we should, we should flesh out a little bit, and I thought, I thought from past budgets that it was not permitted for us to do that, even though it's a great request, it doesn't allow us to do that within the law.
I think the bonus question is a little bit different, so it should be researched.
And that's what I want to do, and I do support finding a way to pay our officers and our first responders additional funds. I find the 1% pay increase after January 1, which works out to be a half percent over the year, is inadequate, but I know that's a tall order for us to do, but I support finding a way to do something, whether it's the full 3% or part of it.
Thank you. Councilman Tigre?
I would remind my colleagues, if we wanted to reward our employees who live in the county, we could reduce property taxes and give them the same effect.
Councilwoman Weiner?
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to say, in whatever way it's possible to fund whatever piece of this we can fund, I think it's the least that we can do for the men and women who protect us every day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blalock?
Thank you, Chair. I'm definitely in support of this, however, I was just wondering, has anybody come up with any ideas how we're going to try to find this $9 million?
No.
Not yet. Working on it.
Okay.
Councilman Tigre?
I would remind my colleagues, if you want to print additional money, we can raise property taxes also.
The good ideas just keep coming, don't they, Councilmen? We moved from that to the social service request. This request for $76,700 was a restoration of several different program cuts. They provided the council with a list of those, which involved some things that had to do with some meals and some transportation, and that was the gist of what their request was. Any comments on that particular request? Okay. Under, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Allen?
Thank you very much. I just would like to reiterate that the first $10,000 of that was just for bus passes, which theoretically would enable people that we otherwise will be spending money on to take care of in other ways, to get to jobs and things like that, and that, if we can do nothing else, I think we should at least do that first $10,000.
Thank you. Anyone else on social services? Okay. Thank you, then. We move to the school garden supplement and healthy living programs. Councilman Tigre?
If you think about the childhood obesity epidemic, and what the mayor's office has made as a priority for a healthier Nashville, and you consider that we as a community are willing to fund supplements for cheerleading sponsors and football coaches and band directors, it would make sense to me to fund school garden coordinators at selected schools, or those schools willing to buy into the idea, would be a great investment, so I'm hoping that we can figure out some kind of way to reward our teachers, who are willing to go the extra mile to teach our kids where food comes from and how healthy eating will benefit them for a lifetime.
Thank you. Further comments on the school garden supplement and healthy living program request? That move, Councilwoman Weiner?
Thank you, Chair. Did we not say they were going to absorb that in their budget?
We said that we're, there are discussions going on-
And?
-but we don't have any resolution to that yet.
So, if we support this, we're just telling them that we really want them to find a way, and if not, we'll try to find a way.
At this moment.
Thank you.
However, I mean, however, to implement it, because it's, this is forced in schools, the money would have to be appropriated-
Right.
-to the school board to oversee it, because they're the folks that have the authority over those individual schools.
Right, right, okay.
The public library, a request to consider restoring Friday hours for all regional libraries? Councilman Domine?
Chairman, I put this in the wish list because there's a number of students that need to do their studies, they need to do their work on the weekends, and we have Fridays out, they cannot do that, and I realize it's a difficult thing to man all those, but even if we had it open half a day on Fridays at the regional locations, I think it would be appropriate for us to do that for the benefit of the residents of this county and those students that must do the studying. I've seen firsthand parents going over there to prepare for projects that their student has to do over the weekend, and they lose one of their days to do that, with us not being open on Fridays. I'm still here.
I see you there.
Anyway, that's the reason I put in there, I got the notice just a few minutes ago from the library department showing their priorities and their regional centers, I would want to have some discussion over that with them as to how we might could do that. If we come up with a smaller amount, I'm open to that, even if we do a half a day for Fridays, that might be appropriate.
All right. Councilwoman Dowell?
I just want to say that I also support the Friday hours for the library, even if we have to consider just opening maybe two of the regional libraries, I think we need to have more libraries open on Friday to help support those students who have projects and work to do on the weekends, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the library request? That then moves us to the administrative position in the Metro Clerk's Office. This is a position that was moved as we moved the alarms program to the codes department. Shannon is actually here with us, and because she did not have an appearance before us, if there were any questions about the need for this, she is here to, to address them. Seeing none, thank you for being here. We will consider this request. That moves us to three additional grant requests. The first is for Culture Fest at Lady Gilmore's request to consider. Lady Gilmore, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Chairman Stein, you've done such a delightful job. You have, you have, you have. Been here every day.
I'll remind you of that at the beginning of next week.
And you can, that's my, that's my, I believe it, and I'm sticking to it, and I just wanted to say that, because one night, the meeting went really long, I think it was with the education meeting, but you let us ask all of our questions and make all of our comments, and I think I was able to attend all of them except for two.
Thank you.
So, I am asking for $200,000 for this, and a lot of people might say, "My God, that is a lot," but I'm really excited. Most recently, I just participated in the CMA Festival, and I had a good time. I went down there and I bought me some boots, and I was just so Nashville, and just looking at all the money and all the people that come to this city and what all it generates. So, this is an initiative that this particular group wants to start to diversify and build on what we already have, and I thought this would be nice seed money, but we know from the CMA, when they get really big festivals such as this, generate 31 million, 41 million, bring 80,000 people into our city, I think it was more than 80,000 this year, so that's why I'm asking for this. I think it'd be a good return, and if some people think that this may be a little bit too much, I hope that you will give something, so that we continue to diversify and build on Nashville, this red-hot city, as we continue to bring more tourists into the city and have a variety of cultural events that have depth and speak to the diversity of this city. So, thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, and we want to see your boots on a Tuesday night.
I'm gonna wear them.
Okay.
They kind of hurt my feet, though, but I got them from Betty Boots, and I loved it, I did.
Councilman Claiborne?
Could we have a description of what Culture Fest, I mean, what is it, how many days is it? Where is it? Who's involved with it? What is it?
It was a handout.
I apologize, there is a handout, we got information from Lady Gilmore, it should have been distributed. We will, in the course of this afternoon, get that on everyone's desk.
Okay.
It's the Chair's fault, I apologize for not getting it distributed.
I would just make the observation that just a couple of meetings ago, we extended a 50-cent hotel motel tax that is set aside specifically for the purpose of promoting events, some of the smaller events in Nashville, and I would think that this particular group might be, it might be more appropriate for them to go to the CVB and check on the possibility of getting funds through that particular source than it would be for us to deal with this in the budget.
And I bet that dialogue is going on, but we'll see that everyone gets this information from Lady Gilmore. Ms. Dowell, can we pass that out at one of our meetings this afternoon?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, you're recognized, Lady Gilmore, if you wanted to.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just appreciate you saying that there is information present about it, it explains how many days it is, explains the audiences that it would reach out to. We can also give you a breakdown of the budget, if you'd like that as well. Any information that you would have or that you would need, we would get that to you, and I just appreciate you acknowledging that, Chair Stein.
Thank you.
And, I did have a question. I wanted to see, would this program, though, qualify for that, that tax that he's talking about? I don't know that it qualifies.
It is an event, so it could certainly be considered by the event committee, correct, Mr. Reblin?
Yeah, yes, sir. The committee has some guidelines that are online that can be looked at, but typically, it gives some money to grow some, it's small events, but the bulk of the money goes for CMA and the, and the Music City Bowl, Women's Final Four, things of that nature, but it does have some funds available to grow new events.
Thank you very much. Just want to say that I have supported all those through some type of legislation or something like that, and I would like to support this in some way, form, or fashion as well. Was a big supporter of the Women's Final Four with the legislation they needed for the city to clean it up. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Stein. Rich Reblin again. Please consider this event for the monies that Councilman Claiborne has graciously shared with us for new events. All of the events that you have mentioned are very, very positive for our city, but if we are truly going to be what we say we are, which is the it city, then we have to have a variety of events that are offered for all people, and I like the variety that this event brings to our city. Correct, they're gonna have the Coretta Scott King Book Awards, Visual Arts Opening, and other things, the Tennessee Tribune, and the library, and several private companies are putting this together, and I think it's worthy of your consideration under that category. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dowell?
Thank you. I also support the Culture Fest. I think it's a great event, it'll be great for the city, and one other additional item that Council Lady Gilmore, Karen, didn't, Council Lady Johnson didn't mention, is that the Culture Fest plans to branch out and also include opportunities in all of our communities, so it won't be a, an event that's just held in one spot, it'll actually go over to different communities and host events and things, so I think it's great for Nashville and it's great for, for all of us, so I ask that you support it.
Thank you very much. Any further comments on Culture Fest? That then moves us to Inflemotion, which is a $30,000 recommendation from, I think, 11 or 12 members of this council. Inflemotion is a nonprofit that provides assistance to at-risk youth in working on becoming citizens, specifically involving ACT prep, wellness programming, and ACT testing. Councilman Maynard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know the nature of this meeting, we're looking at a wish list, but the, I just wanted to talk about the seriousness of Inflemotion. Many of you are not aware of the program, they are very, very effective, they reach those who are at risk, and they make sure that they have the tools and the resources necessary to qualify for college and education, because we know that education is the greatest key we can that will open the door to success. I finally want to state that rarely do we have so many councilpersons who come together and then, and then support this, so I hope that the full body of this council will recognize that many of these wish list items have two or three people supporting it, but this one has at least 10, and we will hope that you will support it as well as $30,000, but this investment of $30,000 will create so much return on investment by helping our youth who would not go to college and never dreamed that they could go to college, have the tools and the resources necessary to go to college.
The Chair has certainly noticed the long list, and I suspect we're about to hear from each one of those folks in the next few minutes. Councilwoman Weiner?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. Is this a county-wide program?
Yes.
Are there any other entities, profit or nonprofit, that offer the same services?
There are similar youth-serving organizations in town, yes.
So, my third question is, can we offer this on the wish list, naming a specific entity? Or do we have to put that out for bid?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we can absolutely make a grant.
As long as they're a valid 501(c)(3).
As long as they're a valid 501(c)(3), this council has the authority to do it.
Thank you.
Councilman Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to echo the comments of my colleague, Councilman Maynard. Inflemotion is a great program. When we talk about college access and making sure that our students are making an ACT score, they do a great job. They work with high school students from all over Davidson County, not just in one part of the city, whether you're in the Cambridge Cluster, or you're in the White Street Cluster, or you're in the Hillwood Cluster, they work with students from all over this county, and I think that is very important, and they have a great record of success of raising those students' scores and getting those students to a point where they can qualify for scholarships, gain access to college, and their target is to make sure that all their students at least qualify for the Hope Scholarship. Also, just want to take the time, I came in a couple minutes late, if I could, and just thank Council Lady Gilmore for also including the wish list for the Culture Fest. I am very supportive of that, even though I'm not listed as the requested for that, I do thank her for that, and I'm very supportive of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think we have some more amens. Councilwoman Dowell?
Thank you. I just want to say that this is a wonderful program, and I also am very supportive of it, and it's a program that I would like to see grow in our city if we're truly committed toward education. I know a lot of students have benefited directly from this program. I had the opportunity to go and visit with them during the session, and we had over 300 students from area high schools participate in the program that was hosted at the former Hickory Hall Mall site that they had. So, I think it's a great program, we need to continue it, and it is definitely a pathway for many students getting into college, so I definitely support, and it's just a minimal request in consideration for it.
Councilman Bedney?
And you're correct, I'm also in support, but I also wanted to repeat what I said before, that we need to embrace what makes Nashville unique, what makes us special, and this is another opportunity to support something that is going to embrace part of our diversity that makes us so special, so I hope that people will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Stein. Colleagues, I just want to echo all of the comments that have made by everyone as well. This is a very, very important program to children, to provide them access to higher education. This increases academic achievement, they have actual results that show that they have increased their academic achievement and been able to have access to college and higher education, so I would ask that you please support this, like Council Lady Dowell said, this minimal amount, because this is a minimal amount for the, the type of investment that we're asking for, which is in our children. Thank you.
Councilman Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to chime in on this, because the fact that I've worked with the director many, many years, and this organization is not one that's just a startup, this organization has a lot of longevity. It has created educational opportunities for many, many kids throughout this county, and I think it's a worthwhile program, and I think it will continue to be a worthwhile program, and these are the kind of programs that we need to support when we're talking about education, because it's a direct link to education and getting kids in college, so I fully support this, because I know how many years they were in service when I was Chairman of the Board of OY, and that's a long while years ago, but they were still operating at that point there, and so they've done a good job, and I support them, I wish we could go ahead and fund them for that amount. Thank you very much.
From one corner to another, Councilwoman Berry?
Thank you, Chair, and I absolutely support this, and I just have a quick process question, however. We actually have a process where we give community grants, so does that mean, then, if we give them the $30,000, that they cannot apply for a community grant, that this takes the place of that? Or how does that work?
There's no limitation.
So, they could still apply for additional funds after having been named as well?
Right.
But the process is done for this year?
Yeah, it would have to be for the following-
For the following fiscal year.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I the last one?
You are, actually, on the phone.
I'm on to you. I'm on to you, but I appreciate it. Just want to say, I would like to ask everyone for their support. It's a wonderful organization. They reach out to all the students, and they definitely move the needle in, in terms of ACT, and I think that's very important, where the average ACT is between 16 to 18 in our city, and it needs to be at 21. So I thank you for your indulgence, and I just ask that everyone would support this in Full Motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we, last on this list is the Neighborhood Resource Center. Councilman Scott Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All of us at one time or another have attended a training or a workshop or even an event at the, at the Neighborhood Resource Center. We know that they support us in a lot of different endeavors in our neighborhoods all over the county, and right now, we know that they work miracles with the few pennies they get. And the staff work very hard. We know they're overburdened and overworked, and the staff are also taking a pay cut also in order to keep the Neighborhood Resources going and supporting our communities. And so I know it's a wish list item, but I would appreciate that we can give this little bit to the Neighborhood Resource Center, and if we can't find the money, I'm not going to cry, but I would love future support in helping them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Stein. I have the rise in support of funds being given to the Neighborhood Resource Center if we do have them, and the reason being is because many of us as council members, we have events, and one in particular is special with my community, which is the Night Out Against Crime Event. Every year, I don't know if many of my colleagues know this, but the Neighborhood Resource Center allows for their nonprofit status to help us with acquiring the donations needed for that event, and that's why it is as large as it is. They have provided that assistance to me since I started on the council, and that is one of the reasons why that event has been successful. They also provide administrative support in reaching out to organizations and people to come and participate in that event. So I do rise in support of them receiving such a minimal amount here for the great amount of service they give for us as council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Neighborhood Resource Center? That then concludes our going through the wish list. Additional comments? Councilman Tigre.
I'm going to offer a reduction in the General Sessions Court of $25,000 to help fund whatever needy projects are on this wish list. For you council members that were at the Budget and Finance Committee hearing, you remember the question was asked as to why the General Sessions Judge, who ran in the Environmental Court Division, does not see fit to sit in that office or hold that court himself or herself? And I think it's incumbent that this body once again send a clear message that if you run for a position in our court system as a judge, that it's important that the citizens of Nashville expect the judge to be in that seat. And so that's a $25,000 appropriation that is totally unnecessary and certainly could help fund any of these worthy projects on our list. And I hope other council members will come forward with ideas on how we can make appropriate cuts to fund some of these more important positions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Weiner.
I have a question and a comment. My question is, when we were talking to the folks at Municipal, they had requested $77,000 for a finance officer. Rich, is that in the budget, or is that a requested addition?
There is no subsidy for municipal auditorium in the budget. So if they, if their board and director chose to hire someone and, and use their own enterprise funds to, to cover that, but it's not in the budget, correct?
Correct. Correct, John. It's anticipated, like we did in this year's budget, that they would come back in the spring for a supplemental to finish the year out. So that would just be additional cost expense on their, on their P&amp;L, so to speak, and so they may need additional, hopefully it'll generate more revenue, but if not, whatever the shortfall is, that will be coming to the council for a supplemental in the spring.
Okay, so that leads me to one last question that is more long-term, I would assume, but is it possible to look at the municipal budget to see what are duplicated in the Music City Center budget and possibly consolidate some of that and save the money and put it towards some of these projects that we need to look at or that we want to look at?
Not for purposes of this budget.
Yeah, not for purposes of this budget. I mean, I think a, a long-term analysis of that facility, along with other facilities, is warranted, and it's something that we're, that we're moving in some directions of, but, but doesn't help you in this budget, because there's no funding in this budget, per se, for it right now.
Okay.
It would just come from a later's appropriation.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? At this point, I would thank you all for your participation. In the next couple of days, the chair will make his recommendation, and then obviously we still anticipate the discussion in Budget and Finance Committee to be next Monday of that substitute budget, and then, again, pending the will of the council, we will certainly take our first stab at trying to pass it at our regular meeting next Tuesday night. We now would, Budget and Finance would adjourn at 5:15. Councilman Hunt will join me for a joint meeting of Budget and Finance and the Planning Committee for purposes of considering the amendments to the capital improvement budget. Thank you all.